Okay, let's call this meeting in order. Notice of an open joint work session of the City Council, the City of North Kansas City, Missouri, and the City of North Kansas City Parks and Recreation Board.
Thank you, sir. Actually, Mayor Stilo requested that we have a joint work session with the Parks Board to discuss a number of matters. In particular, I think was interested in the first item on the agenda regarding programming and how the department does it. And then we have another number of other items, some of which the Parks Board put on and some of which were requested by council members or which we thought would just be useful for informational purposes. Pertaining to the first item regarding programming, we did go ahead and put before your place just the Parks and Recreation Department's latest program guide, looks like this. So that's in front of you in case that would be useful for reference during this discussion. And then there are a number of other items. So at this point, I'll go ahead and turn it over to the Parks and Recreation Director, Kelly Batipka.
Thank you, Eric. Good evening, Mayor Stilo, council members. On programming, if I may, Mayor Stilo, we had conversations in regards to Parks and Recreation and, you know, understanding about the programming and indoors and versus outdoors kind of concept. So what I'd like to do is kind of give a definition of what recreation means. Recreation is an activity of leisure. The need to do something for recreation is an essential element of human biology and physiology. Recreational activities are often done for enjoyment, amusement, or pleasure and considered to be fun. Our purpose in providing recreational programs is to provide a fun, mentally stimulating, and social environment for all ages in our community. Recreation programs includes arts, crafts, dramas, book clubs, gardening, sports, health and wellness, and sky's the limit, it's almost anything you can think of. Someone might have an interest in a craft on Pinterest but have no idea how to start that or where to get the supplies, or doesn't want to participate in that alone. So we may get a request to host a class for making candles, or paintings, or a holiday craft or project. And our goal is to offer a class, camp, or seminar that anyone, young, old, or in between, has an interest in or would want to participate. Majority of our classes we offer, the participants end up taking home a finished piece of artwork, holiday decoration, knowledge on how-to project, or a week full of memories. Now, the last week of, first week in August, the week before school, we had a art camp. That was Monday through Friday, 9:00 to 3:00 p.m. And so we had this parent sign their child up for this program because they needed someplace for their child to go. Child likes drawing, coloring, so they thought, what a better way to utilize their last week before school started. At the end of the camp, this eight-year-old participant created this still-life drawing. This is my eight-year-old. This is something as a parent that we signed her up for something fun that she enjoyed and realized she actually has something, a talent, something of an interest. And now she, participating in this class that we offered, this camp that we offered, is very interested in learning more about art and seeing how much more she can grow and develop in her art skills. Now, class costs, that was one thing that was, I know, was brought up and not very clear on how we manage or plan our classes and our programs. We have two ways that we program classes and look at costs. One way is sometimes our instructors will have a minimum, so therefore they want to make certain amount of money per student, including their supplies. So if we don't meet that number based on the minimum number of students, we usually will not host that class because we will end up losing money to offer that program. And there are times that we have given that class because we've been one shy and it's just been a really exciting program and it was a larger class that needed eight or 10 participants, and we didn't want to turn away those seven students. So there are times like that that we will offset the cost and allow that program because we don't want to let those children or adults miss out on something. Another way that we budget our classes is we do a percentage. You know, a lot of times it's a 70/30, 80/20, 60/40, just kind of depends on what type of class it is. So at the end of the day, we are making a small percentage, even if we have that one child, we could be, or one adult, we could be making $2, $4, but at the end of the day, we're making something, the teacher's making something, and the participant is allowed to come in and enjoy and do what they're wanting to do through North Kansas City Parks and Recreation. And then we also have some classes that we offer that are free to the community because an organization we work with has grant money, that they are able to offset their instructional cost and supply costs. So that's, those have been really popular classes that we offer. One's a nutritional class for teenagers and students, and then we also have offered some for senior adults. Classes are selected based on what is trending, or what staff might come up with, or what we think may be creative, or we see another municipality, local or across the nation, trying that. We have instructors reaching out to us that they have these ideas, or they've been involved in doing something for so long and want to share their talent with the community, so we always visit with them and talk more about trying to bring them in, or if we think they'd be a good fit with our department. And then currently, right now, we're evaluating the types of programs that we offer and then what we think would be best suited for the new facility coming after the first of the In 2012, the board started a campaign to increase the parks tax levy from 0.12 per $100 assessed value to a .20 per $100 assessed value. And some of the language that they used in their campaign was the ability to offer a broad spectrum of popular programs for seniors, adults, and youth. While many of these programs have an accompanying fee, excuse me, it is important to provide training, trained staff to administer the programs while maintaining quality facilities for these activities. So I'd like to believe that myself and my staff are sticking true to what the Park Board promised in their campaign to the community to increase their tax levy and how they can benefit from this increase. And just kind of one more little thing about Parks and Recreation programs, why they're highly used and thought of, and why they're important. NRPA, or National Recreation and Parks Association, put out a survey this year of Americans' engagement. And one of the findings were, the reasons Americans visit their local Parks and Recreation facilities are as diverse as they are. A place to be with family and friends, to be more physically active, to be closer to nature, to access quality, affordable childcare, and to learn a new skill or craft. Then other activities from the survey that Americans partake in at local Parks and Recreation facilities include playing sports with family and friends, visiting the local recreation senior center, having children participate in out-of-school time programs such as summer camps, before and after school care, taking part in classes, lessons at local recreation center, and participating in local sports leagues. So hopefully, at the end of the day, we've, I feel confident, my board feels confident, staff feels confident, that we are meeting what Parks and Recreation means to the community of North Kansas City by offering their way of classes, programs, special events for all ages. Okay, any questions? Thank you.
Do you, do you give a...
I barely hear you, I'm sorry.
Say like at the end of the month, or whenever, do you put out a thing that says, okay, how many people attended this, this program, or, you know, I mean, to kind of keep everything on board completely up to date as to what's going on and...
As for the program, no, we, we don't do a report, but when our staff does a, our monthly report, sometimes in the board packets, they'll say that we just held, say, the art camp, and it'll list off how many children we had, or we just finished a session of. But we, I do not do a detailed monthly, you know, report stating how many we have. But I do know, we, I did put together when this request came across from October 1st with the new budget year to July 31st, just kind of how much we made this year on programming was a little over $10,000. But in that line item, we also include our bitty sports programs, which is soccer, basketball, and golf and stuff. So those are part of that revenue that was brought in from programming. So programming is not, you know, where we look at making money. It's about offering a service to the community. A majority of our revenue is brought through our youth programs, our shelter, facility rentals, adult leagues, and things of that nature.
You know, I guess when I got to reading through the program, you know, something like, you know, like many art camp, ages four to 12, I thought, you know, how many four-year-olds are really into the arts or something like that, which, you know, like, maybe they are, I don't know. But there was just a number of things that kind of glared at me, like, well, why are we doing this, you know? And, and I guess it kind of boils down to whether, you know, if you're doing something well and taking care of it, sometimes we can expand too much and not take care of everything. You know, sometimes I wonder whether we're maybe trying to do too much, you know, where... So I don't, I don't know. I mean, it's just, I'm not, I'm not on your board or anything else, but it's just things that entered my mind and I just kind of wanted some answers to. And, and you know, I, you put up a very good argument.
Thank you.
As far as the programming, you know, I think they've got some great programs. You know, there were a few that kind of jumped out at me as well, like tie-dye pillowcases and, and, you know, there were several art ones which are good. I think the arts are good. You know, but what I'd like to see, like fiber art, maybe that's, I'm not sure how popular that is. But I, would it be possible, or I think it'd be a good idea to kind of know, and it can be done in a spreadsheet, you can make a spreadsheet with all the programs that you have, and then if the parks, the tenants, or whoever runs the program can kind of get a tally of, you know, what your membership is, what your attendance is on each, on a certain program, I think that would be helpful for you guys as well to manage it and to, you know, to do that. So I mean, you're saying right now you don't really keep track of who attends each program? Like what, what number of people attend each program or each class?
We don't run reports, but for every program or class we have, we have a registration that we do.
You have a registration, so you do have a copy?
So we do track who has signed up and things of that nature.
Okay, and how many, okay, alright, so you've got that.
And information is easy to gather and put together, so...
Okay, so I just want to make sure that you, you could review it and see, you know, how the program went, if there were three people, if there were 10 people, you know.
Is that something the council wishes for me to bring back, or just for us to kind of have on, on hand for the board and staff?
Do you guys want to see it?
I think it would be good to see it. Nothing wrong with seeing it.
Okay.
Some of your bigger expenses, like the concerts in the park and stuff like that, you don't make money on those, do you?
No, sir. Yeah, all of our, yeah, almost all of our special events are just giving back to the community.
Concerts to the park are actually funded out of convention and tourism, just as an FYI.
What was that again?
The Convention and Tourism Fund is what pays for the concert series in the park.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, yeah, I don't know, I guess it, looking at the, at the budget, you know, and your, your incomes, the, the tax you bring in is somewhere around $600,000.
$633,000, I think, and I apologize, I don't have a budget in front of me still, I'm sorry.
And then the, the rental on your ball fields and stuff like that is about another $150,000. And pretty soon, we're talking about real money, you know, I mean, it, it seems like that they're, but then, when you come down to the end and you're six, you're still $60,000 over budget, and so you, you know, you, you can't continue that.
I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me to review.
Well, I did.
I think Eric's got it up there.
Yeah, I didn't know this was in the conversation, so... Are you looking at the proposed budget or last, or...
Well, I'm looking at the last year's budget. I haven't looked at the new, new one.
Do much?
Yeah, well...
Okay. Can you repeat your question, Mayor Stilo?
What's that?
Can you repeat your question, please, so I can track, I'm sorry.
Well, basically, I guess it's not a question, it's just that you, you just can't keep going over budget, you know, I mean, it's a, we've got a, we've got a city that's in our area that has been living on their, their savings, and they're going to have to start cutting their police department, you know? So everybody kind of has to live within their budget, you know, I mean, it's, we do too, and I do. Sometimes I go over my budget. But, you know, I'm not, I'm, I guess that it's, it's, the city has spent a lot of money, you know, I mean, we've, we've funded the spray park, we've funded the dog park, we're funding the building down here, I don't know how much money we've spent on this thing, but I think the city has done, been more than fair in trying to keep the park department and everything going. And I'm not complaining about the way you run it, it's just that it seems to me like there ought to be, stay within your budget, I guess. Anybody else got anything?
You know, I, I believe that, the few times I've been to a movie in the park, that they do have a concession stand there, and so they're able to make, I don't, probably not a lot on the concessions, but I also believe, I truly feel that once this building is up and they have the ability to rent out the spaces for weddings, or, you know, any kind of rental that they're going to need, I really feel like the Parks Department is going to have a whole lot more income once we get this building up and they have the ability to actually have something that's their own, to be able to make some money from. So I just kind of wanted to say, you know, just patience, maybe? And I, I think that they're going to get, they're going to get some of their own money here really soon. That's all.
Eric, just one thing I did real quick. While the department did budget a deficit in this fiscal year, 2017, we are now looking at, at projecting a small surplus at the end of the year. So despite what they budgeted, they're projected to come in, in the black at the end of this fiscal year.
Well, I thought the original question that you had asked was, should the park, board, staff be more accountable to the council as to the programs that they initiate and the success by virtue of the number of people that attend? That was the original question, and we never did get an answer. Does the, does the council wish that to happen, or are they satisfied with the way it's being handled now?
Rick? I think, you know, what really bothered me is, you know, I found, you know, I know that at least the administration at Parks didn't want to have this meeting. They thought it was none of our business. You're self-governed. We was reminded that you were self-governed through an email. And we know you're self-governed, but you're never totally independent when you can't finance yourself. You have responsibility with that money to be accountable to us because we pay taxes too, to the public. You know, I have no problem with the programs you have and, and the way you run your boards and things like that, but I get tired of being told, and I've been on boards before that's got their own taxes, it'd be, since you know it's not you, it's the library. And I, and I know in their meetings, they, well, we don't have to do this, we don't have to do that, they can't tell us what to do. But no, nobody wants to tell you what to do, but it seems like you, not necessarily the board, but maybe your director there doesn't want to share the information. That's what I took from the email that you sent to Eric. Now, if anybody doesn't know that, let them read it. That's a, kind of an arrogance to me, when you can't pay your own bills and you're going to have to ask us to pay them, and then tell us really, it's none of our concern if you lose money on this or that or the other. And I know it's coming, I don't know when it's coming, tonight or what, the walking trail. I like the walking trail, so when I've seen it, it needs repair, I walked it the other day. And the picture you drew, the picture in here is very accurate. I found three out of the four, I know for a fact, need what you say it does. The one at the U-turn down on Ozark, I didn't see anything wrong with it, but I seen the place that is sunken, and that's dangerous, and I seen a place that's, has heaved up, and that's dangerous. But, but it darn sure doesn't need a whole new resurface, 100%, it just doesn't need it. So when that does come up, keep that in mind, that we, I have walked that trail. And I do want that trail safe, and I, and I think it's a very nice trail, so. But I guess if you wind this up here, you know, we're all family and everything, but I get mad at my family sometimes. And I just don't like the idea that you don't have to not get approval to do something, necessarily, but to ask our opinion, or we ask you something, you know, don't have it in the back of your head, you know? And I used to have a lot to do with the park, I used to umpire down there for NKCA, I watered that diamond free, I've done this, that, and the other, and I know how they used to talk, you know, about, one of the mayors, that he didn't want to improve that park, you know? So I know you, it's been said that, you know, hey, we govern ourselves, it's none of their business, but it is. And not only have it not disclosed, we're council, I see the way you're looking, Elizabeth, but that's the truth.
I just...
I see your faces you make.
I'm not making a face, I'm going...
Yeah, you, yeah, okay. That's, that's a bit for me, Mayor.
I mean, I just, I'm just, oh, that's all.
I saw the email, and I had, I had the same feeling that my fellow councilperson had, it came on too strong.
Be honest with you, this email is what started this whole thing, so, anyway.
Well, if I may, I would like to just say that I did send, and I hope it was shared, an apology for my knee-jerk reaction for that. So hopefully, everybody was well aware that that did come through as well.
You know, I'm, I'm like Rick, you know, we're, we're all in this thing together. We're all here to perform for the citizens together. And what I would like to see is everybody working together, you know, I, I said, can, have you reached out to the, to the library, is there things that you can do together? The same way with the Y, is there things that you could do together? You know, and, and draw everybody into the thing. I just want everybody to get along. Anybody else got anything?
Well, in regards to programs, I think it'd be nice to maybe have some sort of quarterly attendance numbers, and maybe what, you know, what the fees were collected for those classes as well, just, you know, just kind of see, just to kind of see where we are, at least quarterly, I think would be.
Yeah. Anything from the board out there? We're doing, we're doing, and Kelly and us are doing all the talking.
I'm sorry, Rick, I upset you, I was, I was just trying to digest it, I'm sorry.
Well, and you know, I think, I think we hold back too much sometimes. I laid it out the way I felt tonight, so you know how I feel.
I appreciate that.
I don't dislike anybody on the board, I don't dislike the park for any reason, but it's been building up for a long time. And, you know, Marilyn's always told me, you know, just tell me what's wrong, my wife, you know, and I do the same with her. Don't let it bottle up. So finally, I let it out tonight, that, what's bothering me, you know, so we just have to kind of go from there. If we're going to be family, we've got to be able to be honest with each other. Okay, anybody else?
Next item?
Okay.
We have a bunch, yes, sir.
Okay, let's go.
We do have a bunch more items on the, on the...
Okay, let's go.
All right, and the next one is the maintenance improvements of city parks, and I'll turn it over to Kelly.
Thank you, excuse me, thank you, Eric. What I thought would be a good idea is, a lot of, kind of like we talked about, there's a lot of misunderstanding, lack of information, that doesn't know what's going on in our parks, you know, all the things that we have done or the board's approved, financial spendings with our, you know, fund balance, or putting it in our operations budget. So we've done a lot of improvements to our park system since I've, I've been here in 2014. We've, you know, between the capital improvement projects and our budgeted maintenance for the parks, we've, we've invested over half a million dollars to improve our parks with beautification, new amenities, repairs, ongoing maintenance of light bulbs, trail light bulbs, globes, you name it. So I thought this would be a really good idea or a clear picture, so you could kind of see how and what we've done, for the, you know, community to see what we've done over the past couple of years to improve their parks. And we, you know, we're very grateful as the Park Board for, for what the City Council has done for us at Dag Park, you know, that, that cost of that park is, is over our budget. We are very grateful and thankful that you have given that to us, and now we're able to maintain it and operate and offer a beautiful park to the community and residents of North Kansas City. And I thank you guys, by driving by it every day in the summer, saw how well-received it has been. So we thank you for assisting and helping us getting that. And one thing I'd like to also add to, you know, again, with the vote for the increase of the tax levy back in 2012, is one of the other few items that were proposed from the board and the campaign was regular maintenance and necessary improvements for existing park amenities at the quality level that the residents expect. So again, I'm hoping that, you know, these are showing the community that you voted for these items for that tax increase, and these are the things that we were going to do for you, and hopefully you're seeing that we're getting these things done. So, do you guys have any questions on the spreadsheet, or anything on that? No?
If not, move on to the next item, which is Dag Park dates and procedures. Councilmember Lodaw had requested a discussion of this, I don't know, perhaps you'd like to call, or Councilmember Lodaw to talk about her questions and concerns?
Yeah, great, thank you. You know, I'm speaking for my constituents as well as myself, the Dag Park playground is a new amenity with new equipment that everyone should be able to enjoy year-round. I'd like to have a discussion regarding how we can make that happen. A few of the topics that I'd like to just kind of go over really quickly are, I just wanted to ask why the playground is only open for three months out of the year. I can ask the questions first and then you can answer me, or we can go one at a time, whatever you prefer. So the first one is, why is the playground only open for three months out of the year?
The park opened last May, Memorial Day of 2016, so the park, everybody was there for grand opening, wasn't ready 100% to be open, we still didn't have all the grass fully in, we still had some staining water, some, you know, low areas, things of that nature, but we wanted to get the park open for the community. So at the end of the season, the board made a decision based on the wear and tear of the green space grass. It was pure mud, there was no grass, there was, it was just a hot mess. So we ended up deciding to, we did a CIP project, a capital improvement project for irrigation, sod, and seed, and that started mid-October, so it was rightly after we winterized the spray park, so the whole park needed to be shut down so they could do that. So for the first year, the reason it was closed down is because we needed to get that grass and that sod and everything established to, it was healthy and could tolerate the wear and tear that it produced with all the participants there in the summer. So yes, this is a conversation that the board has been ready to have, we knew this would be coming up this year, but for the first year, that's why it remained closed, so we could get it well-established, so we weren't revisiting again, putting that expense out there to, to fix the grass. So some of the concerns that we have, and if I jump in, I'm sorry.
Please do, go for it.
You know, some of the concerns we have is when the spray ground, spray ground is shut down for winter, you know, for the winter months, you know, having the kids, having the play, access to the playground, well, they'll still have access to the spray park. So are they going to be climbing on the spray peaches? So are they gonna be climbing on the spray features, swinging on them, damaging them? Could they possibly get their skateboards out there and ride along the, the turf of the, the spray park concrete and damaging that up, or riding their skateboards on the, the water feature? So that's one of the big concerns that the board has with leaving the Dag Park open as a whole once the spray grounds closed. So we've kind of come to, we've had some conversation, and one thing the board has kind of thrown around some ideas is, once the spray park itself closes, leaving the playground, or leaving the gates unlocked, but the playground be open on Saturdays and Sundays from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. That'll help kind of eliminate the high schoolers going in there, the troubles we can have with them, their lunch trash everywhere, keeping the bathrooms locked to keep all that stuff out of the bathrooms that go on, you know, with high school students, and thought that would be a good direction, a good start, to see kind of how that was favored with the community to be open on weekends. So it's kind of where the board's at right now with operating once the spray park itself shuts down.
Okay, and then, so what would it take to have the playground open for spring, summer, and fall? Have you thought about expenses, anything else that you have thought about, or can we start that kind of conversation?
This would be a good time to start the conversation, the reality is, there's not a lot of daily expenses that go into having the playground open, it would be similar to Mackin Park, expenses would run into utilities of having the restrooms open, if I remember right, those, one set of the restrooms have heat in them, so they could be on year-round. So the utilities of electricity, water, things of that nature, restroom, trash supplies, stuff like that, so it's minimal cost, it's what we have included in our budgets, so nothing out of the ordinary to have it open would be out there. You know, obviously, wear and tear over time on equipment pieces, or the artificial turf, or things of that nature would be added costs, but hopefully not projected in the near future.
Sure.
Yeah.
And speaking with a few other municipalities, there are spray parks and playgrounds in other municipalities, and so I thought maybe if you wanted to contact some other municipalities and find out, how do they handle their playground, spray park in one area? You know, just the one person I was able to speak to said that nobody messes with the spray park. So, you know, you never know.
Eric forwarded this to me today, so I did reach out to area directors group that I meet with, with that question, so I'll be interested to see what responses I get back to, so...
Kelly, do you get any feedback from citizens about the same questions that she's asking, about why it's not open longer, or that sort of thing?
Yes.
You do get some?
Yes.
Do you get a number of them, or just once every, once in a while?
Once every, once in a while, it's never a big abundance, but yeah. But we know it's been a conversation that we needed to have, but we just knew that first year it just had to stay closed, so we could get it well established and stuff, so...
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to echo that as well, I've had a lot of neighbors come up to me with kids, and it'd be interesting having that extra park there to play on, so that would be, they would definitely like that. I mean, at least with a variety. I mean, they know they have two other playgrounds, but sometimes, you know, they just want to like to switch things up.
It's new and exciting.
And it is kind of also a little bit more in the middle of the residential area there too, so there's quite a few kids coming in the area right now, that are also kind of the closest.
We have eight neighbors, just on Fayette ourselves, that have little children that could totally enjoy, you're so, it's so close to our neighbor, our, our block, you know, so...
Right.
So one of the ideas that I had, and of course, anybody can have an idea of what we could do, was that maybe this fall, as soon as we close the spray park in September, is it the end of September?
Yes, unless it turns chilly sooner.
Yeah. Maybe we could try leaving it open, and maybe not make it like totally, like a big, huge, gigantic announcement, but try keeping it open for a couple weeks, even during the day, and let's just kind of feel it out and see, you know, is our fear of people destroying it, and teenagers skateboarding on it, is that a, a real thing, or is that something that maybe might not happen now? In my, in my mind, I thought, you know, maybe being next to the police station, it wouldn't happen, but who knows, you know? I just don't want to make decisions based on the what-if, a fear of what could or could not happen, without first, at least, let's, let's just try it, you know? So it sounds to me like the parks already has in mind, you know, the reason why it was open for the first three months was simply because it was, it was new, and we needed to make sure everything was as it needed to be, and that, I, what I'm hearing is that you want it to be open more often, it's just a matter of trying to take baby steps to get there.
Yes.
Thank you.
And I'm, I'm not opposed to that, and the board meets next week, so I'll be glad to bring that to the table to discuss and see which direction they want to take with that.
And, and just the playground, not the spray park.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
In that regard...
Some ice, ice features out there.
The school is back in session now, have you, have you had any problems with kids there, yet?
I do see high schoolers over there, sometimes they're, they're playing, and, you know, even though they're bigger, if they're behaving, it's okay, but I've seen them having lunch over there, just sitting down, so, you know, it just, just depends.
Yeah.
Yeah, so some days are good days, and other days you've got to run kids off, and I caught kids jumping the fence one day in the middle of operating hours, they just didn't want to go to the front gate, so they're jumping the fence, so, I mean, you're gonna have it, you know?
I think that that amenity is so new, and the equipment is so new, and I've even been over there, and it's just, it's so fun and different, something I've never seen before. So I'm, I'm pretty sure that the children around here really want to play on that, even though it's, might be kind of chilly outside, you know, so, thank you.
Moving along.
All right, sir. The next topic up is serving of alcohol in the Parks and Recreation Center. In our memo, Kelly outlines a park board request for the city to amend the city code to allow for serving of alcohol at the Parks and Recreation Center when it's completed. So this is only up for discussion tonight, but if you were to indicate that you're amenable to that idea, then we would then bring that forth to you for a formal action at a later date. Kelly?
Thank you, Eric. Earlier this year, council approved to amend the ordinance, so we were allowed to have alcohol in the park for a few of our events, and we want to thank you for that, because they were successful, and we had no issues or concerns, and looking forward to having them get next year. So with that, and with Councilmember Lodaw kind of mentioning, you know, things that we're looking at is, you know, ways that we can make revenue, so we can become self-sustaining. We're never gonna be, you know, 100 percent there, we're gonna need money down the road, but if we can pay our bills, or if we can keep, you know, doing maintenance and repairs, that's our, that's our goal and our vision. And ways to do that, though, is to bring in revenue. And one of those is renting the facility at the new Parks and Recreation Center. I've already had calls from people interested, and like, it's not even built yet, you don't even know what it looks like. But they're excited about it, because one family's like, we rent Mackin Park, but we have so many people that are getting older now, so that way they can be inside, we can go outside, and it can be a joint rental, you know, kind of thing, so... But what we're after is, is if, if a lot of individuals want to have a small bridal shower, or they want to have a 50th wedding anniversary party, or even a, you know, sometime a party, a lot of times they want to have alcohol. And so that is another way to get an interest party to want to look at our facility, to want to rent it. And so that would be having, at this point, I don't have any vision of making any money off the alcohol aspect, but as I've been doing some research with other municipalities that rent out their community centers, they have an alcohol fee that they charge, and I think that's more on the lines of for damage control, like 150, 175 bucks, just a flat fee. So that's something, you know, we may want to look at, but right now I propose that not to have one, but as I did more research, you know, that's an option out there as well. But tonight, I'm working, I'm asking to move forward with approving to change the ordinance to allow alcohol in the new facility, the Parks and Recreation Center, because I'm getting rental requests, we're looking at getting information put together for the new facility, and that is one item that I would like to have available and ready when the new facility opens.
Who's first? Nadine, are you?
I have a question, and I don't know who would know the answer to this, but does the YMCA allow, when people rent their rooms, do they allow alcohol now? Because I'm thinking that if they do not, perhaps the community center and the Parks and Rec Center could team up, and if somebody wants to rent the YMCA, they want to have alcohol, but they cannot, they can then refer them to the Parks and Rec, and I, I think it'd be a good idea so that they can have some more income.
I don't know the answer for certain.
Yeah, I didn't know if he would, so...
If I had to guess, I would guess the answer is the YMCA does not.
I agree that it probably would not.
I doubt if the Y would ever do that. That's, it's a national organization, you'd have to go through so many hoops.
So they would get a lot of the, you know, people that have to turn down the YMCA could then be sent to the Parks and Recreation?
Well, doesn't that put us in competition with private industry? That's not really fair to private industry when you've got a government competing against you. That's my question.
Well, you know, this is something that's bothered me, you know, we've got, I think, three or four venues here in town that rent space, you know, and they're trying to make a living out of it. I would hate to think that the city is competing with them, however, after I got to thinking about it, if, if we were competitive, I mean, at, at the same price range, or else we don't want to cut the rate, you know, trying to draw people in, but if we were, you know, in the same rate, then apparently, you know, then they're just going wherever they want to go. So I, I would assume that I could probably, probably live with that, you know, as long as we're not, you know, cutting rates.
Right.
Actually, we probably should charge a higher rate.
It probably could, yeah.
I'm in favor of, of allowing the parks, I mean, it's capital enterprise, it's, you know, it's, it's not a monopoly. I know we want to protect us for our businesses as well, but we want the parks to be self-sustaining, if we want them to be more self-sustaining, and this is a way that they can draw revenue, then I think that's great. My question would be, how would be the security for the parties? You know, would somebody from the Parks and Rec Department be there, would there be a security guard there, off-duty officer? I'm in favor of allowing you guys to do that, as long as security is up to snuff to keep anything from happening.
Yes, Councilmember Clevenger, oh, I'm sorry. To answer their question there, a lot of the same rules, procedures, regulations, however you want to classify them, are the same as for the outdoor venue. We would require two security officers, which the rental party would pay for. We would have staffing, as in park staff, there to oversee the facility and the, and the renters' needs of what, you know, whatever they need to help close up the facility, make sure they're renting out the appropriate time they're supposed to be there. So a lot of the same regulations are, are exactly the same, the caterers will have to follow the same procedure for their licenses and everything.
Okay. I'm in favor of it.
And I'm sure we've checked on our insurance, and this isn't going to cost us any more to have alcohol in there under the insurance policy of the city's, correct?
You know, that...
I don't.
I was a member of an organization, still am, that Mr. Clevenger's a member of, and we wanted, we started renting our hall out, and it costs in the range of $5,000 or $6,000 for that rider policy, if you have alcohol, if you allow people to rent.
Well, I, I think we, you need to be real careful about using that number. We, I don't know that we know the answer to that question. We could check into that.
And I am not in favor of being in direct conflict with our businesses downtown, at all.
Yeah, I hate to guess for someone, to be hypocritical, my God, we, we compete with the internet business. We got our own internet company, it didn't bother us to do that. I mean, I'm sure one of the internet people would like to have our business. So I don't think that argument's got much to stand on here, I mean...
I agree, and I don't think that somebody's going to have a wedding party, or some type of a little private party is going to be, you know, worry about going to someplace that's got a big venue somewhere, I think that's going to, these businesses down here that serve alcohol, they're not going to have a wedding party, if that's what you're talking about, things like that. I don't think we'd be in too much direct competition with local businesses. You can't hold five or 600 people down there, like Black on, on Burlington Can or anything like that, you're not going to be worried about that, you're going to have smaller groups of people down there. So, that's my opinion, I wouldn't have any problem with it, I don't think if it was thoroughly vetted out.
Do you have any idea approximately how many you're thinking of maybe having a year, is, do you have like a cap, or maybe kind of an average you're looking for to have this rented out?
I have no idea.
Okay. I, I know, I wasn't sure, but I, I just, a couple things is I wouldn't...
I mean, it would be nice to look at, I'm sorry.
Sorry, no, go ahead.
I mean, you know, it'd be nice to look at having one or two a month to start off, but then your ultimate goal would be, you know, you have one every weekend. You know, that, that's where you want to get, or even one or two during the weeknight, I mean, that's when you're doing really well, but I think one or two a month within the first year, we're doing really good.
I mean, I'm okay with it overall, a couple things that, I wouldn't really want it to compete or kick out other activities, maybe, that we're planning that, that...
No, we wouldn't do that.
Okay, so you're looking exclusive, kind of different times. Okay, I would like to see security, or at least recommend defining security a little bit better, because, I mean, like hiring me as, I mean, just as security in here, I don't know if you're looking at expanding that into specifically saying, you know, off-duty officer, or, you know...
Yes, it would be an off-duty officer, whether it be the county...
Okay, okay.
Private security, things of that nature. Currently, our, our, our police department does not participate in...
Okay.
Off-duty for those type of venues. But yeah, no, it'd be an armed security guard, fully dressed and, and...
Okay.
Yes, in uniform and stuff.
I just, I just want to make sure, it just says provide security, so...
Yes.
Do we have any kind of a consensus here, or...
Sounds like some are, some are in favor, some may not be. I guess my, my intention would be to go ahead and bring it before you, and you can have a formal vote on it at a future time, but we'll have it before you.
That's probably the best way to do it, wouldn't you say?
Would the questions answered?
Yes, sir, so that, I guess the main, we'll, yes, sir, we work on having answers to the questions when we do bring it back.
Okay.
All right, sir.
Next item is one that Councilmember Stewart...
Excuse me. The next item is one that Councilmember Stewart mentioned a little while ago, and that is Mackin Park walking trail, and park board's concerned about that. Kelly?
Thank you, Eric. We had already set our budget with all of our capital improvement projects this year, which was not including the trail at Mackin Park, because at that time, it was not up for conversation, or was not in the condition that we thought it was needed to be repaired. So January of this year, we decided to do some, out, walk in the trail ourself, and getting some comments from users that we should take a look at the, the condition of the trail. And so I had McConnell Associates give us an estimate of what it would take to repair the trail, and they provided us with three different options. And what the board decided to do, or felt that would be better to replace the trail as a, as a whole, so what, we didn't have, look like patchwork, and, you know, you've got five to eight years on the patched areas, so if you get this cycle going, you're going to have a, you know, patchwork out there and never have it look attractive, or be a, you know, nice-looking trail. So the board made the decision that, we knew that the hospital had installed the trail in 1989 with investing $45,000, and so the board made the decision to ask the hospital if they would be interested in, in investing the full amount to repair, I didn't get the right language here, I'm sorry, to do a full-depth patching with new surface for the whole walking trail. At that time, the hospital was only able to contribute $5,000 towards the trail, and currently, nothing has been done to that. So I know this was kind of brought up, and just more kind of an information, but I know Councilmember Stewart, you had some more comment, questions in regards to this?
I don't have any more, I just agreed with the map, the picture you have.
Yeah.
There are three spots that really, two that really need fixed, because they're a danger to people. I personally couldn't go along with spending 100 and, almost $178,000 to redo that this year, or even the next budget year, that's just how I feel. But those three places definitely need to be fixed, so, I don't, everybody else feels about it, but I'm certainly sure that that's a minimum fixing those danger areas.
You know, I love that walking track, and that, and that trail along there is perfect. But I do agree with Rick on this, no offense, I think the, the patch, what did we say the patch was, 12,000, something? If I remember reading correct in here, I can't find it now.
Yes, yes, it's the minimum's 12,000.
I mean, I could go along with that for the patching, because I want to keep that trail safe and, you know, well-used. And eventually down the road, maybe we can look at resurfacing it all, but I mean, eight, what did we say, five to eight years? I mean, if we can get five, six, seven years out of it, that'd be, that'd be great, and then down the road, we can see what we can do, and, you know, if the parks can maybe build up their fund balance as well a little bit, from, you know, trying to be physically responsible, you know, I think we'll, you know, we can look at it then. But I, I definitely want to get it fixed to the point that it's going to be good for use, so, I'm in favor of the patch as well.
I agree with that. Barbara and I walk that trail often, from where we live, walk down there and walk around the, the trail. It seems to me it's in pretty good shape, I have not stumbled yet, if I, if I do, like, somebody will probably help me back up, but I guess I haven't just noticed what... noticed what, uh, Rick's noticed. There's a, there was a place down there that's always got a yellow cone in front of it. I think that's the place that he's talking, talking about, but I would have to agree, we could, let's, let's patch it up a little bit and get along, because it's pretty good shape.
There's a few little areas, too, that have little cracks that can...
Yeah, but, you know, it's, it's a lot better than some of them I've been on in, in Kansas City and around here.
Well, yeah, the way I read it, there's three options. Uh, the minimal patching is 12,050, that's option one. Option two is full patching, that's $70,445 cost. And then option three is full patching and new, new service, which, surface, which is the $167,550 cost that was, uh, provided. Now, with those three options, since the hospital has gone forward with $5,000, um, they said that they would help, would that be subtracted off any, uh, of either of these options?
Yes.
So if option one is 12,000, then maybe you would subtract 5,000 from it. Is that correct? Yes or no?
Correct.
Thank you.
Did we only receive one bit from one company, or the walkway?
Yes.
Uh, I think it was just, you were just trying to get a quote.
Yes, this, yeah, this was an official bit, I'm sorry, it was just a quote to kind of get an idea of where we were looking at.
Yeah, I kind of echo what everyone said again, it's just, option three does seem a little much. Uh, I don't think the whole track needs to be replaced. I mean, I definitely think option one's a viable option for repairing those patches. I mean, I walk that quite a bit. I'm usually kind of on the west and south side, though, because usually we're cutting over to the playgrounds, but I, I think definitely the, uh, the minimal surface patching, I mean, just to see how it goes, because a lot of the track does seem to be in fairly good shape, so...
It sounds like Parks Board has heard you on, on that topic. Uh, the last item that we're showing on the agenda is, uh, development of a city Parks Board School District Usage Agreement. Uh, Kelly?
Thank you, Eric. Um, every year, the school district pays a fee to utilize, um, six tennis courts, three ball diamonds, the walking trail. Um, we, we provide the park staff that cleans up all the trash after all their activities, cleans their restrooms. For many years up till this last season, uh, our staff prepared their, drug their baseball fields, but the, the coaches would come out and line them and put their, install their own bases. So, um, with this year, we had a new changeover kind of in our contact with the school district, so we've got a lot of more conversation going, and both parties realize that we have nothing in writing that states what each party is entitled to, who's responsible for what, what fees cover what. So currently, right now, I'm working with the representatives from this, the school board, uh, excuse me, the school district, and one of the, uh, park board members, Mr. Carnes, we're working together to come up with an agreement, um, that meets, um, both needs, and then once that's ready and the board's in favor of the, the language, then we'll get that to you guys for review.
That's a good idea.
That's it, yeah. Thank you.
Okay.
That is all the items that we have listed on the agenda, unless there are any other topics that the board or the council would like to discuss.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Let's get out of here.
Okay, let's call this meeting to order. City of North Kansas City, Missouri, regular council meeting, September 5, 2017. We have a moment of silence? Comments from the public? State your name.
Carol Marado. What I would like to address is the name of the street that runs in the new area where you took down the grain bins. And I know there were several that, I think the one that got the most votes was, I'm not sure, I guess, but I was just thinking that maybe you should reconsider. And I thought that, the reason I didn't like, what was it, North? North Town Lane or Boulevard or what was it?
Parkway.
Parkway. Because I feel like this whole area is North Town. And I keep talking about North Town and how wonderful a place it is. My children went to school there. We've always participated in things that were going on in North Town. So I just feel like you're taking this big whole picture and putting it in one street when we should be thinking of all the little parts that make that one big spot. And it really doesn't have to be, we liked Diamond, it's hard to find a name, you know, we were thinking in Diamond Parkway or Diamond Boulevard or something like that because it is a big presence there. I don't know what else is all going to be along that street, but it's kind of a point where, a focal point where you're going to say, this is where you turn and it's on Diamond Drive or Diamond Parkway. On my way here, I was just thinking, I wore my Diamond Loop. I thought, well gee, you could call it Diamond Loop. It could be the Diamond Loop, right? But it's probably a little late to start on new thoughts, but Hornets too, I think, with this new high school, with what they're doing and building, how wonderful that is. But that's, that's another part of that big North Town. So I think that, you know, we want to make every area, whether it is Diamond Boulevard or Diamond Parkway or whatever you name it, I think it needs to signify more these areas, these different areas that make up North Town. That's my thoughts. And when we tell people where to come, like I'm always telling them now, well, when you come from the South, you'll take that 16th Street exit, which I don't think will be ready right away. And it's nice if it has, that area has a name of its own, I think. It says something about all the different things that are going on there, rather than continue with the name of the whole place. So.
Thank you.
All right. You're welcome.
Anybody else?
My name's Charles Cash. I reside at 408 East 30th Avenue. Mr. Mayor, council members, I have a concern about the big LED sign that they're wanting to put up in One North. I think with, Marado was just here and they've got a beautiful store going up. I mean, quality, it looks like something that would be in Johnson County. And they've got a lot of nice developments out there. And I think we want a quality, high-quality, first-class look to One North. And I think having a large LED sign out there is going to look more like, I don't know if, how many of you remember it, Fairyland or Las Vegas or something? It doesn't have the, to me, the appeal that the country called Plaza does, or some of the large developments in Johnson County. And I just think it would not be attractive and people driving down are going to get their, the highway might have the wrong impression of what kind of stores and what kind of locations are there. That's my concern. I hope we, you know, think about that. So that's my opinion for what it's worth. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Hearing none, moving on. Consent agenda?
I move, we approve the consent agendas as presented to us.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Item number 14. Amendment to sign ordinance for Armor Road redevelopment area. Bill number 7224, ordinance number 9021.
Eric.
Thank you, Sarah. I'm calling the community development director, Sarah Copeland.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The ordinance that's before you tonight proposes creating a new sign district that would govern signage just within the Armor Road redevelopment area. We think it's appropriate to have a new and distinct sign district for this area because it's relatively separated from other commercial districts and because it's being developed as a cohesive area. Staff has developed these regulations in consultation with our master developer for the entire area, as well as MJT Development, which is developing the Marados Jewelry Store. These regulations are based generally on our general business sign district. Some of the changes include adding a new category, development sign, to provide for entrance signage to the development. We are prohibiting pole signs in this area, and so ground signs must be monument signs only. The wall signs are permitted to be slightly larger than in our general business sign district, and we've eliminated the height limit for wall signs because we expect to have taller buildings in this area. In the general business sign district, the wall sign height limit is 30 feet. We are permitting off-premise commercial signs in this area. The master developer is planning to have a billboard, an electronic billboard along I-35, and would like to put up a smaller poster board sized sign along Armor Road. And we've also prohibited window signs. We feel that these amendments are generally in conformance with the Armor Road Framework Plan and the master plan. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have about them.
Do we currently have signs on Armor Road now?
What kind of signs? Yes, we do.
The ones that they're planning on having?
Well, Armor Road right now, no, we don't currently permit billboards, except in the manufacturing district. Yes, the, the master developer would like to be able to put up a billboard.
So when I drive down Armor Road, I'm now going to see a billboard?
Well, there was an existing billboard that was recently taken down by the city in approximately the location where the master developer would like to put up a new billboard. I think it would be slightly more to the south, but we have, in rezoning this area, that changed the sign district. And so currently, absent these amendments, he would not be able to do that. He would also like to put up another type of billboard along Armor Road, it would be much smaller. They're planning, last I heard from them, four by 12 feet, but it would be still off-premise signage. It would not ordinarily be permitted.
And on this billboard, is it going to say, is it advertisements for the One North KC or is it advertisements for, let's say, Marado Jewelry or, do you know what the billboard will say?
My understanding is that he plans to have the billboard advertise businesses in the redevelopment area. However, our ordinance does not restrict that.
Is there a way we can restrict that?
I don't think that's legal.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, technically, what she mentioned is illegal. What are you asking us to do in number 14 then? A new sign district? I hate billboards, by the way.
Yeah.
I think they're gaudy, I think they're worse than power lines. No, no, power lines are worse. What are we, you asking us to consider?
Well, I'm asking you to consider creating a new sign district for the development area. As part of that, we're asking you to consider allowing billboards in this area based on consultation with the master developer. If you want to not allow billboards, that is perfectly fine with me.
Oh, okay, put me down for that.
I think, but the, but the answer that she gave me was, the billboard can say advertisement for anybody. It does, it's not going to just be whoever's in the One North redevelopment area, it can be for...
That's what I hate the worst. If it's just for the businesses inside the new development, I wouldn't mind as much as, you know, people that, businesses that are not there.
That's probably what it would be for. It wouldn't be to their advantage to put down a Safeway, you know, it would be for people in One North, I would think. Not knowing what he's planning.
This ordinance does not deal with content. We cannot regulate the content of that sign.
I'm not sure, if I had a classy place, which I see one down there now, I love that building, I wouldn't want a billboard out there on the road. To me, it's just low class.
Unless it had my name on it, of course.
Well, yeah, if it had Anita's name on it.
No, not mine, but the, yeah, the business that's right there.
Have we asked, you know, the Marados here, if they, how they feel about the LED and the billboard?
Two totally separate things right now.
Right.
They have seen the draft sign ordinance amendments, yes.
Okay, so they've seen this.
Now, the billboard to the south on I-35, that has been taken down, but it will be probably replaced later.
Well, it depends on what you decide about these sign ordinance amendments. Right now, if you do not make these amendments, billboard is not permitted there under our sign ordinance.
Sorry. Okay, so if I'm driving down Armor Road, am I going to see like, a big pole? Like, as I'm driving? Is it going to be like, right there?
I can't answer your question because I don't know exactly where he's planning to put it.
Ah, we don't know where, okay. Thank you.
What is your recommendation?
My recommendation is the ordinance before you, but if you decided that you did not want to permit the billboards, you could remove that section of the ordinance.
First reading.
Can I ask him one more question? I'm so sorry.
Can we?
I guess I'm just curious and you may not know the answer to this, but the redevelopment area is going to be called One North. Correct?
That's what the developer has branded the development, yes.
Okay. Is there going to be a sign that says One North?
That, he would like to put up what we're calling development signs in this ordinance to, you know, indicate the entrances to the redevelopment area, yes. Those are not the billboards.
Okay, good.
Those are two separate things.
Okay, thank you.
So development signs are defined in this ordinance so that we can establish that is a new type of sign. We don't really have any signs like that currently. And then separately, there is off-premise commercial signs, which would be the billboards.
Okay.
Eric.
And sir, my suggestion would be based upon your discussion, that you first have a, decide amongst yourselves, without taking a formal vote, perhaps whether or not you would like to allow billboards in the district. If not, then I would recommend deferring action on the ordinance and letting us bring an amended version back to you at a later meeting. If you're comfortable with the ordinance as presented tonight, then you could proceed.
I would say let's defer.
Well, I guess staff's question would be, would you like us to take the billboard provision out of the ordinance that we bring back to you?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, it sounds like there's consensus on that, although I did hear Mr. Clevenger say that he, he's comfortable with the billboard.
I'm comfortable. Do you remember the old Signboard Hill in Kansas City when they had 5,000 million? None of you are old enough probably to remember that. They had one over there in town that had millions of signs on it, and that was horrible. But I, you know, we're, billboards are part of our life now, and if it's not too obtrusive and gaudy and that sort of thing, which you can't always control some of that, but, you know, I could live with it.
Given that there doesn't appear to be unanimity on this, my suggestion, sir, might be that you have a motion and a second, if there are motion and a second, vote on the ordinance before you, which does include billboards, and if it doesn't succeed, then you could provide us further direction.
So you just want to bring it back?
No, sir, my suggestion is that you vote on the ordinance before you, which includes billboards at this moment.
So I'd need to say like a first reading and then somebody would need to second it. We'll vote on it. You want to second it, Bill? Vote on it?
You made the first reading?
I, I put a first reading out there.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So it fails.
Shall we have a roll call vote, sir?
Councilmember Sanders.
Aye.
Councilmember Clevenger.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Stewart.
No.
Councilmember Stefan.
No.
Councilmember Farr.
No, ma'am.
Councilmember DeLong.
Yes.
Councilmember Lodaw.
No.
Four to three.
So the motion failed. So the question now that we, staff might ask you is, would you like us to bring back to you an altered version, which contains the other provisions that are in the ordinance but removes the provision that would allow billboards?
Can we not just make a motion to amend it now?
You could, I just am always concerned about an ordinance which needs to have exact wording. I think city councilor would agree with me. That's just our concern, is that we, you need to, I, that would be my only concern.
Just a matter, question the procedure, can this pass on just four votes or is five votes needed?
No, sir, it, you, as it happens, there were four votes opposed and three in favor, but five are required for an ordinance to pass, so that's the answer.
Anita.
If I knew it was going to be located, perhaps maybe a little more information on where the billboard is planning to be placed?
That is not something that we could get into in the ordinance. We're talking about a change to the city code, not, we don't, we're not going to be able to provide you that information. At least not for consideration of an ordinance.
Okay, what do we need to do now?
Well, what I think staff would intend to do would be to bring back to you at your next meeting, revised sign ordinance that would remove the provision for billboards, and then you can consider that at your next meeting. So the motion did fail and, yeah.
Moving along then. We're done with that. All right. Number 15.
Potential LED screen, Drive Golf &amp; Brew.
Eric.
Thank you, sir. I'll call Ms. Copeland.
So we have begun working with the architect for Drive Golf &amp; Brew on the plans for development of their site, Lot 2 of North Kansas City Destination Development. You recently approved the conditional use permit for the driving range. As part of our discussions with them, they've inquired about the potential to install an LED screen on the netting on the rear of the driving range. The information that they submitted, that's in your packet, shows that this would be approximately 86 feet wide by 116 feet tall. The, there's some additional information in there, and I believe that they're here tonight if you have questions about that. Our current sign ordinance, with or without the proposed amendments, does not permit a sign of that size. And this would fall into our definition of a sign in the sign ordinance, any announcement, declaration, demonstration, display, illustration, or insignia, or other identifications that is visible from any public place or exposed to the public that directs attention to a product, services, place, activity, person, institution, business, or solicitation. So before we just said, no, this isn't permitted, we thought that it would be appropriate to ask for your opinions. This is, you know, a new development, you might be interested in having something that would be iconic and visible and unique in the metro area there. So we're looking tonight for direction from you, whether you're interested in this. And if you were, then we would take next steps in working with the applicant to see next steps for facilitating that. We did think that there were some things that you might want to keep in mind in making this decision. We believe that between 92 and 100,000 vehicles a day will pass this site on I-35. This is going to be visible from the highway because it will be larger than the building in front of it. There will be 225 apartment units across the street, so that there will be people very close. And as we just discussed, once this type of LED screen sign is up, we will have very limited ability to regulate it in the future. So with that, I would be happy to have any direction from council, or if you have other questions about this.
What direction, Sarah, does it face? Is it bidirectional? Does it face inward toward the city, the hospital, or does it force I-35 mostly? How is it going to look?
It would face towards the west.
It would face toward the west? Okay.
Seems to me like a pretty bad distraction for drivers on that interstate. I mean, repeat the size of that thing again.
86 feet wide by 116 feet tall.
I love the idea of the golf thing. I won't say I'm a golfer, that'd be insulting to the game, but it's just too big for my, my thinking. Especially if we put apartments in. My God, you wouldn't be able to sleep at night. But that's my opinion, too big.
So in the, on the agenda in the packet, it shows on the last page, some pictures of, I believe it's the Hyatt, the Kansas City Arrowhead, Casey Royals, and would that be, let's say, kind of an estimate of what it would potentially look like from the highway?
I can't really answer that question.
You don't know?
My understanding is that it will have a slightly higher resolution, but I can't tell you that.
Sure. And, but they said, they gave us those for examples, obviously. Okay, and then the apartments that will be there, will they see the light from this LED screen shining through their windows at night, or will they not?
I can't answer that question either.
Is there anyone here that can answer that question?
Are the apartments going to be to the west?
Maybe we should have somebody come up that can...
The apartments would be located to the west.
Deal professionally with the question. Here we have somebody right now.
Oh, good.
Absolutely. Thank you for having me.
Tell us all about it.
Yeah.
Love to. My name's Terry Lee, I'm with Drive. I think we should probably start from sort of the concept in general, give everybody a better idea. Have you guys seen what it looks like? You're familiar with Topgolf, I'm sure, right? Everybody in here? So ours is a little bit different in, in terms of the technology. And Topgolf does this RFID chip where the ball has to fly through a hole and go through a sensor. Our technology is military-grade Doppler radar, so it tracks the ball from the time it leaves to the time it lands, and it's all integrated into a computer so people can play games. They can hit targets out there, they can hit the clown, they can hit moving targets. Some of it's animated, some of it's real. The back screen is not meant to be a billboard or a sign or anything out of Vegas. It's, it's there to augment the play and the games. So you saw in the package where somebody will hit a ball out there, and there'll be a reaction. Now, when the LEDs aren't on, it's almost invisible, it looks more like netting, you can see right through it, because when you look at a billboard, when you're driving by, it's more high-def and very clean, clear picture. What we're talking about is more muted or faded, sort of like you described, I believe it's the downtown Marriott, where they'll do holiday signs and things like that. So it's more of a reactive-type screen, and it could be an explosion, it could be a target that people are aiming for out there. What it really does is give the person that hit the ball instant feedback. So if I hit the ball, it hits the screen, it'll automatically tell me that it went 200 yards, and that could be posted, my name could be posted out there. So it's part of the gameplay is what it is. It's not meant to be this...
This is facing towards, it's not facing out.
It's, it's facing towards I-35. So, so it's back towards this three-story facility, it's three stories of hitting bays, so some of it's blocked by that. The condos and the hotel are not in the site. They're to the side of it, so this is not going to be flashing. The closest, the closest residential building is a half-mile away on the other side of I-35, and there's only one of them.
So it will not shine in on someone's bedroom or affect any living quarters?
Not the ones that are being developed in the same complex. Because they're on either side of us. And the, and it's only 100 degrees view pattern.
This drawing here is, this shows that you hit your ball up here and you're going into the...
Into that screen, correct.
Into that screen, and that's where it's going to be.
That screen's shining back.
So that would not, that would not be faced towards I-35.
You had something on your screens right now, I think.
That's a good...
This one I don't understand.
It won't face I-35, but...
Have you got the next one? This one is the one that...
Correct. And these are, these are not, these are LED lights, so they're very focused, the shine comes where they're pointed, and it dissolves very rapidly to the side. It's not like a regular floodlight or anything. That's why the residences, I believe, are to the south, and the hotel is to the north of there, and they're, they're outside of that, that diffuse pattern.
So in our packet, the last page, the bottom-right picture of the woman who is hitting a golf ball, and she's looking on a screen where there's a circle where she hit the ball, that's what they're going to see?
Exactly.
And at your other drive, is there, do you guys ever do like, yay Royals, or do you ever do anything besides just the golf thing?
That is, we could do holiday, we can do Merry Christmas, I mean, it's, it's meant to be able to do animated things, integrate into the games. If we have a corporate event there, you know, we can put up the corporate logo. Yeah, there's, there's a lot of different things that we can do, and...
This would be the first one.
It's, yes, this is the first one, sorry.
So this isn't up anywhere else that we could look at?
I think it's an exciting, it's innovative, it's going to be good for, I mean, without really seeing, I haven't seen it in action, but it seems to be something that's going to be good for the city, it's going to bring people around and show some excitement and interest in North Kansas City. I don't see how it could be negative, as long as it's not shining in somebody's bedroom or some patient's hospital room, or causing disturbances on Armor Road where you can't read the traffic signals. If it's do as what you said it's going to do, I think it would be very good for North Kansas City.
And just so you... And just so you guys know, the, the company behind this, Thinkwell, they're, they designed some of the biggest, most popular amusement parks, theme parks, museums around the world. They know what they're doing. This is not, this is not something, this is not their first rodeo. They do these things right, they encounter issues like that, they deal with, you know, having to have residences, or, or people around it, or traffic. They do this stuff in their sleep. So, it's not going to be done in a shoddy basis whatsoever.
Hi, can I say moving forward to?
Well, I think it's, it'll be cool, in my opinion.
I still have a question about the interstate. See where it's not gonna be distracted to residents, but will it be distracted to drivers?
And that's a very good point. And we do have, still have to go through MDOT once we have the final drawings. We know that, and we have to get, we have to be approved by them. You know, in gen, in general, they, they usually are only concerned with billboards because they are perpendicular to the road. Because ours is so far off and parallel to the road, they're, you know, the initial reaction has been, has been that it's okay, but they are reserving their right to comment on this, and...
Well, if MODOT doesn't have any question about it, that, I don't either on traffic.
Yeah, and that's part of the process, for sure.
Because I know some of the movie, the outdoor movie theaters have had to turn, face their screen, I mean, they build them that way, so they're not, people driving down the highway can't...
Aren't watching a movie as they drive. No, absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Okay.
No, satisfied me.
I guess the feedback we're looking for is, are you comfortable with this general idea? And if you say yes, then we'll be bringing this back to you at a future time as well. But before we proceeded with that, we wanted to get an initial readout.
Move it forward, as far as I'm concerned.
Move it forward. Sarah, do you have everything you need?
I believe so.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, number sixteen.
Street name for new street, Armor Road redevelopment area.
Would you like staff report, sir? All right. I'll call Ms. Copeland.
Well, we asked for feedback from the community, and we put the most commonly suggested names that we received out for a vote. As you'll see in your, your packet, we received nearly three-hundred votes, although some people were a little bit more enthusiastic than we asked them to be. So, of the two-hundred-and-forty-one votes that we received, one vote per person, roughly seventy-three people voted for North Town, sixty-one for Diamond, fifty-nine for Mill, and forty-five for Hornet. We do need to decide on a name so as to allow us to issue a certificate of occupancy next month for Marado Jewelry. So, we'd appreciate your direction on which name you would like to give this new street.
Ms. Mayor, right?
I did have one question. I, I don't, I did fill it out, but now I don't remember. How did you recognize duplicates? Did we, was there an email attached to it, or what?
No, the, the poll that we used registered IP addresses.
Like if I did one, and my wife did one, from our same house, that would potentially...
Well, what we discovered was that there was one IP address where the person had voted thirty-three times.
There we go.
So, that was the, the biggest, so then we went through and looked, and where we had IP addresses that had voted more than once for the same name, we removed the duplicates and left one, but where we had an IP address, like a husband and wife who'd voted for different names, we left them both in. And that's what you'll see in that final tally. We were just doing our best to remove people who had voted for the same name several times.
Thirty-three times?
Mm-hmm.
Rick? Yeah, it's not, and it's not insulting the people that voted for the North Town, but I agree, North Town, that's the name of the city. I mean, name a street after the city? I mean, I don't like it, but I don't know how Democratic we're gonna be about this. Now, I voted twice, but Marilyn told me to vote for her. I didn't vote thirty-three times, even though I would've if it had been possible.
Yeah, I agree with Rick on the North Town. I, I don't like that one. I kinda do like the Diamond Parkway, just because, you know, Marado's just right there on the coming in, and, you know, it's, it's the anchor tenant. I kinda like Diamond. I mean, I could get along with Mill as well, but, you know, Diamond is, you know, there's not too many Diamond avenues around, or parkways, or whatever, so I kinda like Diamond Parkway.
Anybody else? I like Diamond. I think it's, gives a sense of beauty, and, I don't like to use the term glitter, but it, it does add a little bit of spice to the, spice to the area. And I agree that, I don't think there's another Diamond Street or anywhere around that I know of. It would be a unique name. What kind of numbers are gonna, roughly, can you give me an idea, like, what would their jewelry stores' number theoretically be?
Marado will be nineteen-hundred.
Nineteen-hundred Diamond Parkway, right? I could live with that.
Got a ring to it. Yeah, could, you know, back to that North Town again, nineteen-hundred North Town Boulevard, North Can, North...
Parkway.
Yeah, I don't know.
Post office has enough problems as it is with the mail.
Our post office has enough problems, yeah. I don't know how everybody's feeling, it's going against the vote, but I think that the people who voted, some of them at least, have voted for North Town, could hear our discussion tonight, might change it, too. I don't know. Well, you can't be too far off, because Diamond had just a small motion pending votes. That's what I'd go for, but, that's just me.
I'll make the motion for Diamond Parkway.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Yes, just a roll call vote, sir.
Call or roll?
Hang on, I gotta find a roll call sheet.
Do we need any more?
Okay. Councilmember Sanders.
Aye.
Councilmember Clevenger.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember Stephan.
No!
Councilmember Farr.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember DeLong.
No.
Councilmember Lodaw.
No.
Four yeses, three nos.
It's not an ordinance, so that, that is a successful motion. And we would intend to plan accordingly to name the street Diamond Parkway.
Okay. Number seventeen.
Budget Amendment Transportation Fund Tree Maintenance Resolution Number Seventeen-Dash-O-Five-Eight.
Eric. Thank you, sir. I'll call in the Public Works Director, Pat Hopper.
Thank you. As we all know, on July twenty-second, a windstorm came through North Kansas City and caused power outages and a lot of tree damage. For the next fourteen workdays, our contractor continued removing trees, and limbs, and hangers that were high in the tree. They were assisted by our, our amazing municipal services crews, but we're limited in what we can do with, to that regard. They also hauled all of this wood and limbs down to our compost site, and we need four-thousand dollars, that, the cost of that is four-thousand dollars. So, the total amount that Custom Tree Care spent was, that we owe, is thirty-three-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars, and then four-thousand for the tub grinder, which comes to thirty-seven-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars. I'm requesting a budget amendment from the Transportation Fund to pay for these expenses.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And a good job they did, too.
Yes. Okay, eighteen.
A word of purchase, Office Personal Computers.
Eric. Thank you, sir. I'll call in the Information Technology Manager, Stephen Roberts.
Thank you. Good evening, council and mayor. As outlined in your memo, this year's budget contained a project to implement virtual desktop infrastructure, commonly referred to as VDI. With VDI, all user desktops, programs, and files run on a file server rather than on a desktop PC. The goal for my project was to set up a system which would reduce administration, reduce hardware cost, and provide a mobile option for our workforce. However, after significant research and testing, I've determined that VDI would not actually achieve these goals. For the past few budget cycles, in anticipation of moving to VDI, I put off replacing a majority of our desktop computers. And as a result, our desktop inventory is outdated, with an average life, an average age of over five years, which is well beyond the useful life of a PC. At this point, the city has not spent any of the budgeted funds on VDI, and since it will not accomplish any of the stated goals, my recommendation to council is to not pursue VDI, and instead continue with a PC replacement schedule. So, for this, I've worked out a deal with Hewlett-Packard to buy replacement computers using the HP's State of Missouri Government Purchasing Contract. It's a pre-bid contract guaranteeing state and local governments get the best price for bulk computer hardware purchases, and represents a savings of a hundred-and-thirty-four dollars per computer compared to the next best price I could get. The total cost to replace the PCs for the city is sixty-three-thousand-six-hundred-and-fourteen dollars. So, I'm requesting a council motion to authorize the purchase of new desktop computers in lieu of VDI, and to do so through, using Hewlett-Packard's Missouri State Government Purchasing Contract. And I can answer any questions you might have.
So, you budgeted a hundred thousand, I guess, this year, and so we're just buying the PCs at sixty-three some odd thousand. So, you're gonna be under budget on that, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then, how long do the, you said the computers last? About five years, you said?
Five years is about the end of the life for a, a desktop PC.
Okay. I'm not a tech guy, so I trust you.
I am glad to see you go back to the PC. It seems more often than not, people like to switch over to virtual, because they have the carpet, it always seems to not work out, and they always, I've seen quite a few that seem to switch back afterwards.
Yeah, it, and Microsoft was our, sort of my leading choice for this, and they're almost abandoning, abandoning their technology for it anyway, so it would've been outrageously expensive to continue on that path.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Number nineteen, Approval of Change Order Generator for Fire Station Number One.
Eric. Thank you, sir. I'll call in the Public Works Director, Pat Hopper. Yes.
The two thousand and seventeen gaming budget included a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for a generator, emergency generator at Fire Station Number One. We went, the city went into contract with Yates Electric in the amount of ninety-four-thousand-eight-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars in May, and they got going on the project about August fourteenth, and soon thereafter, they realized that the engineering that was done by Shaffer Klein, the city's consulting engineer, did not include the training room. So, the generator was, the plans did not include powering the, the training room, which is important if there's a power outage. So, what we're looking for, we have funding, sufficient funding in the balance, but we're looking for a change order in the amount of fifteen-thousand-six-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars to add that to the generator.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Twenty.
Short-term conditional use permit, Armor Road Street Demonstration.
Thank you, sir. I'll call in Ms. Copeland.
Our Armor Road Complete Street Plan is reaching the end of the planning process. We have one more community meeting left to hold to present our recommendations to the community for final input. And to do that, we would like to hold a demonstration project and pop-up event on Armor Road to showcase the recommendations. What we would like to do is block off three parking spaces on the southwest corner of Armor and Fayette, to put in a temporary parklet, and to do some temporary crosswalk improvements, and install the bike lane and parallel parking on the south side of Armor, east of Fayette. It's, the map showing what we would like to do is in your packet. Because this is a city request for a short-term conditional use permit, it's on your regular agenda tonight. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Our date for this would be Wednesday, September twenty-seventh.
I did see this was on the back page of Connections, I believe, too, this event. Was it not?
Yes, it was.
Okay, good. So, hopefully we get a lot of people out there to come and see some of the, explore some of the options for the future of Armor Road.
These parking spaces, where are they at? I mean, as far as on Armor and Fayette, what businesses are there, and are they in front of, or they're...
These parking spaces would be in front of the parking lot next to First Watch.
Okay.
I think we got a motion in a second on the floor. We don't? No. Has somebody made a motion? No. No?
Do you have a blow up with this picture on the computer?
No, I don't.
I'm trying to figure out exactly what I got here. Sarah, why don't you explain exactly where the parking spots are?
We would be taking three parking spaces on the south side of Armor Road, immediately west of Fayette, to input in a temporary parklet. We'd block those spaces off, and then the street barn has picnic tables that we will be putting in there, and a bench to allow us to show the recommendations from the plan. And then, we would be blocking off the lane on the south side. Fayette is where we pick up an additional lane going eastbound on Armor Road. We would block off that outside lane to install a bike lane and parallel parking from the intersection to the driveway, which is more or less across from Gentry Street.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Agreement with Midwest Medical Transport Company LLC, Resolution Number Seventeen-Dash-O-Five-Seven.
Eric. Thank you, sir. I'll call in Battalion Chief Dave Harkus.
Good evening, mayor and council. What you have before you is a contract with Midwest Emergency Transport Company. They've purchased APS that we have in a contract with to allow non-emergency transfers out of North Kansas City Hospital. This is just allowing them to continue operations with the change of the name. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, number twenty-two.
Approving Accounts Due and Payable by the City Through September First, Two Thousand and Seventeen. Bill Number Seventy-Two Twenty-Five, Ordinance Number Ninety Twenty-Two.
First reading. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And Ordinance Authorizing Payment for Certain Accounts Due and Payable by the City Through September First, Two Thousand and Seventeen.
I move that Bill Number Seventy-Two Twenty-Five be placed on second and final reading, and passes Ordinance Number Ninety Twenty-Two. Second.
Call or roll?
Councilmember Sanders.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Clevenger.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember Stephan.
Yes.
Councilmember Farr.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember DeLong.
Yes.
Councilmember Lodaw.
Yes.
And Ordinance Authorizing Payment for Certain Accounts Due and Payable by the City Through September First, Two Thousand and Seventeen.
Eric. Thank you, sir. Just a couple of staff comments. First of all, I'd remind the council of your first budget work session tomorrow night, tomorrow night at six PM. The first one will focus primarily on operating expenditures, although any, any budget expenditure is open for your questions. And then, the following week, Wednesday thirteenth, we would intend to focus primarily on capital projects. So, six o'clock tomorrow night for that, and then...
What's for dinner?
We are having Light Fair sandwiches.
We are having Light Fair sandwiches and such. That'll be available at five o'clock.
I knew it, I knew it.
Thank you, we'll be...
And, and then also, just a reminder of the Second Annual Swift Mile Street Festival coming up this coming weekend, Friday night, and then all day on Saturday. It was a great success last year, so let's hope for good weather and, and encourage everybody to come out for that.
I have, sir.
Let's see, I guess you start first. Well, I'm really excited about the new project that we've got going on down here, the new street name, and the possibilities of the sign for golfing, if possible, and there just seems to be a great vibrancy going on in North Kansas City now. We're seeing lots of, lots of different things, thanks to challenge our, our minds and our thoughts, the bicycles, and, and North Kansas City is being kicked and drug into the twenty-first century somehow or other, it seems to me. Heard very little negative comments from anybody about the things that are happening in North Town, and I'm very proud of North Kansas City, where, where, we're just moving in the right direction, I think. And there'll be stumbling blocks maybe along the way and questions asked, but that's the way it is with any new venture, so let's all pull together and hope that everything works out down there, and we'll have a beautiful new place to show off to the whole metropolitan area. That's all I got.
Well, I'd like to echo Bill's comments. I'm really excited about the development and, and everything that's going on in North Kansas City, like this drive golf, and the Myrato's Jewelers, and the, you know, the drive, with the iconic, you know, this sign, this digital signage never, not anywhere else, you know, it's gonna be iconic to North Kansas City, so I think that's, I'm excited about that, and I'm excited about the development that's going into One North. Excited also for the parks, for their building being built, and hopefully they're moving along and still on schedule. I'm assuming, are we still on schedule for the end of the year, Eric? Do we know on the construction on that?
For our portion, yes, sir. Our, our, our street will be substantially complete by the time jewelry store opens.
And the park, what I meant is on the parks building, when I was talking about...
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, yes, sir, I, we're, we're now looking at January at this point.
January, okay, all right. Yeah, I am excited, well, it seems like they're doing well on the street down at the One North Development as well, so that's...
Mayor, I did have a question. I wanted to ask, when is our T-bone gonna be completed? Is there any idea? I heard that there was some holdup on that because of drainage ditch, there's drainage pipe or something, they had to be custom-made or something?
I know they had trouble with utilities, there's a ton of utilities in there. They started out saying four weeks, I think it might be five.
Five weeks.
So, three more weeks possibly.
Looking good, though, coming right along. Thank you, I'm sorry to...
Oh, no problem. So I, I'm also, like I said, with the parks, excited about them, and good luck to the Swift Mile this coming weekend. Hopefully, we've got great weather, and I'll be down there after two o'clock on Saturday. And just a question is, how are we doing on the gateway signage? As far as, were we still, the first one we were working on, Sarah, was that the one on the highway, I-35?
It was. We ran into some difficulty with MODOT and put that off because there was a question about a possible redevelopment project out there. At this point, we're anticipating picking it back up later this fall.
Okay. That would be the first one, and they're still working on designing the archway sign?
The, the plans for that are ready, and we're working on getting it out to bid.
Okay, okay, cool. And maybe, doesn't have to do it tonight, Eric, but in the future, could you give us kind of an update on where we are with the water plant renovations as well, and the designing and all that?
Sure, I can give you that, I can, I can tell you tonight.
Oh, okay.
I would anticipate that you will have a design contract before you, at your next meeting or the meeting after that. So that was, that's, that's kind of where we, we stand on that project, and then that would take probably the greater part of a year for the design of that before we would be bidding out construction.
Okay. Thank you. That's, that's all I got.
The only thing I have is I heard a misconception or misinformation at Sam's level of all places. Somebody, I seen one of the residents down there, and he said, "Oh, as long as you're here," he said, "I can get it straight from the horse's mouth." I'm not sure how to take that, but, for some reason, rumors going around that we're gonna one-day trash. Please pass on to anybody, we're gonna continue with two-days trash, it may be different days, you know, 'cause the, the new trash company when it starts, I guess, maybe November now?
Yes, sir, right. We, we should be bringing a contract to you to begin in November shortly, and, and what the council told us was, twice-a-week collection.
Right.
Everyone collected on Tuesday and Friday.
Yeah, so the whole town gets done the same day, that's where they got their confusion, I don't know. And we're still having the yard waste and the big pickup on, on the first Wednesday, so if anybody says we went to one-week trash pickup, please tell them no. That's all I have.
I'll just, two things, couple of things, is just to echo the excitement on the development down off Armor Road, and encourage everyone to attend the Swift Mile festivities this weekend, Friday and Saturday. That's it.
Speaking of trash, are we on a holiday schedule this week?
Yeah. Yes, sir, we are.
So does that mean then the big pickup won't be Wednesday, it's gonna be Thursday?
Yes, that is what they, they, the, the, Okiit and Pickup will be on Thursday.
'Cause I noticed residents got all out there tomorrow pickup, so...
We did our best to try to get the word out, but we, we know that not everybody does.
I know, but how many people have the website?
I, I, I'll put in a pitch for our text caster service, by the way. That's a service that can get the messages sent to both your phone and your email, one or both, and, and I think for folks who maybe don't look at one or the other, that could be an option, so would encourage anybody to, that's a good way to get the most up-to-date information about what we're doing.
Isn't that also, I, I don't like to speak out of place, but isn't that also on Channel Two cable?
Yes, sir, we, we should, we should also have put it on Channel Two.
That's all I have.
I think some people, too, thought last time they set a delayed schedule, they came anyway, and so...
All right, we had a new appointment tonight to the Planning Commission, want to congratulate Zach Henderson, he's the owner of Colony down the road, also my neighbor. I think he'd be a great addition to the Planning Commission. It feels like it's been a long time, but I hope everyone had some sort of good vantage point for the Eclipse, I believe that was since the last meeting and this meeting. Also went to be on the loop presentation by Mid-America Region Council, and I think that's really something we need to continue to keep our eyes on, and continue to work with our regional partners to make sure that, you know, we're not getting some of our projects shut down, and making sure we're trying to get the new bridge, I feel is the best option there. But a lot of good information came out of that, and I think there'll be more in the future for people to check that out. And since the last meeting as well, we did get bike share station updates, and one of our bike share stations was in the top third of their network, so I think that's, that's working out pretty good. That's, that's all I got.
I wanted to say congrats to Zach Henderson as well, who is my neighbor, and he is the owner of Colony, as Mr. DeLong said, and he's gonna be a great addition, and wanted to say, try to come to the Swift Mile Pint Path this Saturday. I will be there all day long on my bike, and it's gonna be a blast. That's it, thank you.
You had your turn, Nick. Everything's already been said. Moving right along to...
Consideration of a request to hold in recess into an executive session as requested by the city administrator to be held on this date on a personnel matter pursuant to Missouri Revised Statutes subsection six-ten-zero-two-one-three.
Second.
Councilmember Sanders.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Clevenger.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember Stefan.
Yes.
Councilmember Farr.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember DeLong.
Yes.
Councilmember Loda.
Yes.
Twenty-seven. Consideration of a request to hold in recess into an executive session as requested by the city administrator to be held on this date on a real estate matter pursuant to Missouri Revised Statutes section six-ten-point-zero-two-one-two.
Second.
Call a roll.
Councilmember Sanders.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Clevenger.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember Stefan.
Yes.
Councilmember Farr.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember DeLong.
Yes.
Councilmember Loda.
No way.
Yes.